Yes, can you hear me through the mask? That's okay, I'll use my teacher voice, but I just want to make sure, I know sometimes people have heart hearing folks in the room, so I just want to make sure everybody's okay and can hear me. Okay, raise your hand if you are a student. Alright, raise your hand if you are a parent. If you have been involved in activism for a long time. If you are relatively new to activism. Okay, so I'll tell you a little bit about myself and then we'll just get on into it. My name is Ariel Pearson, my pronouns are she/her. And I teach here at UNO in the teacher education department, but I am here on my own cognizance, I am not representative of UNO. Y'all know I said that, I got witnesses. Okay, lovely. So I teach over in the College of Ed undergrad and grad classes, but I've been involved in activism in Omaha for 24 years. I was a high school teacher first for 12 years and now here, but I continue to do activism out in the community as well as within my pedagogical practice. I see a lot of friends in the room, so I'm very excited about that. And some folks drove in from Lincoln today, so that's wonderful, welcome, welcome. My name is Taki, it's calling off. Alright, so we are talking about de-centering whiteness today in pro-Palestinian activism. We really are talking about building solidarity. And so I want to just make sure that you are all feeling grounded and present in the space, because some of this work can be difficult. And some folks might get defensive, and I just want to make sure that nobody throws their food at me. So if you'll just put both your feet on the ground, please. Thank you, come on away. Five feet, both your feet on the ground. I want you to feel the ground supporting you. The earth supports us. And so I want you to know that she's there. It doesn't matter how scared this gets, or how anxious this gets, and how much your anxiety adds up, the ground is there to hold you up. Okay, so whenever you need that, feel all your toes, ten toes down, right? That's what Linda Sarsour says, same with Arab activists. She says, "I'm ten toes down all the time." So I want you to, if you start feeling like, "Oh, ooh, ooh," come feel it. Put your ten toes down on the ground, okay? And this is being recorded, I believe, and I can share the perky with you if you'd like, so contact me if you need that. So, here we go. Ooh, and Sky was very excited to do the perky, so that's... Alright. We need to go to the beginning. One second. I didn't want to log in, so, okay. So before you even begin, I want to hear just from some folks what you hope to get out of this, just so I make sure I answered questions. So just hear from a few different people, what is it that you want to get out of this workshop? Yeah, Heidi?
Please check my thoughts, so that I don't act as a threat, because I'm afraid to be helpful.
Check yourself before you wrap yourself. Love that. Anybody else?
I'm a social work student.
Okay.
And I'm just going to be very hard to write any like savior comments.
Yes, saviorism is a problem, right? Has been since the beginning. Yeah?
Maybe learn how to say, "This isn't about you," like for the practice.
Oh, okay, yeah, for our male sapian friend. Yes. That's my spouse over there, I call him the tall white man with a hard H, because he's very white, like... Dude likes ranch, okay? Alright, so let's move on a little bit here. So the first thing to do is to acknowledge and recognize privilege. Privilege is one of those sticky words that gets people really mad at me, they're like, "I don't have privilege, I grew up poor and I'm a lesbian." I'm like, "And you're also white." Yes, you're right, you lack privilege when it comes to class, and you lack privilege when it comes to sexual orientation, but you absolutely do not lack privilege when it comes to whiteness, right? And so whiteness, your race was never something that stood in the way of you going somewhere, getting somewhere, being safe, et cetera. So we have to acknowledge privilege. It's essential to do that, because it shapes how you move within the activist circles, how you engage with folks on social media. Acknowledging your privilege means you don't know what it's like to be the person experiencing that oppression. The point of acknowledging your privilege is not, this is so important, is not to feel shame, and it is not to feel guilt. Alright, so for your friends over there, when you're trying to tell them this, the point is not shame and guilt, because when we feel shame, we freeze, right? When we feel guilt, we go in towards ourselves. And the point of activism is to go outwards, right? So it's like, any Spider-Man fans?
Yes.
Okay, you know Uncle Ben? Right, he said, "With great power comes great responsibility." So when you acknowledge your privilege and your power, you're acknowledging that you have a responsibility to do something with that power, right? So the tall white, I'm just gonna pick on him because he's there. The tall white man, he can say things in spaces that people will listen to him, but they won't listen to me, right? We just have to be real about that. And so I'll tell him, "You go use your white privilege and send that message over there, right? This is what I want you to say, and he listens to me and he does what I say, right? Even if it's not what, well, mostly the time. Even if it's not what he would do in that situation, right? He acknowledges that he has power in that situation, he can go there, he can make a difference, right? And it's the same with any kind of privilege. If you have able-bodied privilege, go to those places and make sure it's accessible for people who don't have that privilege, right? Make sure that you are standing between them and their issues, okay? So we have to acknowledge privilege, first of all, when it comes to race in this particular case, and also religion in this particular case, and lots of other intersecting identities, right? But we have to acknowledge that we have privilege just being here in the United States. We have a voice that is not being censored for the most part. Some of us are censored more than others, right? Acknowledge that privilege, acknowledge the people to listen to, folks who are white, right? White folks will listen to white folks, they look at me and they're, hmm. There's a wall that goes up immediately, right? So that's why we acknowledge the privilege for that. So we really have to understand that your privileges allow you to engage without overshadowing the voices of Palestinians, alright? So that means that you have more effective solidarity, and you respect the lived experiences of Palestinians, Palestinian Americans, Muslim Americans, Arab Americans. So what that means is, you don't speak for people, right? This is part of that white saviorism. I'm not speaking for people, I'm speaking alongside folks, and only in ways that I've been asked to do, okay? There's a great saying in social justice movements, it comes from the disability movement, "Nothing about us without us is for us." Has anybody heard that one before? Right, so nothing about me and my community was really about me and my community if you didn't ask my consent and you didn't ask my input. Okay, it's like somebody coming into your house and saying, "I'm gonna give you a thousand dollars, okay? You have no money, I'm gonna give you a thousand dollars, and I want you to build a pool with it." And you're like, "Well, I got..." Right? So if you're gonna help somebody, if you're gonna be helpful, you're gonna say, "What is it that you need? And let me do that with the power that I have, okay?" That's what it means to not overshadow or overpower those voices, and always go to those voices first. So listen to the lived experiences of Palestinians, Palestinian Americans, Palestinian lawmakers, Recep Tayyip, Linda Sarsour, all of those voices, and then the voices, of course, on the ground in Gaza and in the West Bank. We've got a lot of phenomenal journalists who are putting their life on the line, day in, day out, telling their stories. We just saw that Hassan Juan and Emmy, and she continues, she just continues to storytell, she interviews people, she tells you what's happening on the ground, right? And on and on and on, she says, "Do not feel sorry for us." This is what Palestinians are saying, "Don't feel sorry for us," because again, sympathy freezes you. What they want is for you to be enraged alongside them, because anger moves you to power, anger is a gift, okay? But again, anger can be used in a rash way, or you can literally channel it very intentionally, very meaningfully, and the only way to get truly angry is to humanize folks and to listen to their lived experiences. So you have to center the voices and the stories of Palestinians and Palestinian Americans to truly understand what it is that they would like you to do, right? Even if that's not, I mean, you might have a friend who's like, "Listen, this person's doing this, this to me, and this to me," and you're like, "Where's their car? Where's the car? I'm gonna make that." Wind chimes out of their kneecaps, and they're like, "Ugh, don't, don't do that," right? So you may want to do that, but if it's not constructive, the person who's being oppressed knows better than you do what the consequences of your actions will be, so you have to do what they say, okay? Respect those lived experiences.
Yeah, I don't want to jump ahead, but can you talk about, if you're not going to do it later, the difference between empathy and sympathy?
Yes, absolutely. So the difference between empathy and sympathy, the great, by the way, phenomenal therapist in our past program here at UNO, also dear friend, thank you, Abdi. So empathy drives connection, sympathy drives disconnection, right? So when you look at somebody, you're like, "Oh, Sky, I'm so sorry for you." Like, "I can't even imagine what you're going through, here's a sandwich," right? But if I'm feeling empathy with somebody, "Sky, I know that you're in a dark place right now, let me sit in it with you, tell me what's going on. I don't know how to respond, but I'm really just glad you told me," right? A lot of times sympathy, you're centering yourself, you're trying to make yourself feel bad. Have you ever had people at least you? Right? "I'm so sorry that you're losing one of your kidneys, but at least you have another kidney." Right? That's sympathy. Empathy is, "Wow, that really sucks," right? Tell me what I can do. Does that help? Did I do it right? Hi. Thank you. So reflecting on positionality, so positionality is, who are you, right? Understanding your cultural lenses, your, where you hold power in your life and where you don't have power, what the different parts of your identity are, okay? So it really shapes your perspective, because your positionality puts lenses on through which you see the world, and those lenses are not the same for everybody, right? A lot of times, we think everybody's norm is the same as our norm. Turns out, not so much, right? So you have to evaluate your role, think about, okay, what am I doing? Am I being helpful? Am I being destructive in some way? Am I harming people? Are people calling me out? What's my place here? What are my strengths, right? Where are the spots where I have gaps in my knowledge? Have I listened to enough stories to even be here yet, right? Who else is around me, and how do I relate to those people around me when it comes to power and not power? Okay? So that you make sure you're not doing saviorism, you make sure you're not overpowering people's voices, and you're not speaking over or for them, you're alongside, okay? So we have to think about who we are and how we're engaging with what's happening on the ground. So we have to amplify, one way to do this is to amplify Palestinian voices and uplift Palestinian voices, because they are being censored in real time. We know that mainstream media is not showing those stories. Most recent example, what happened in Amsterdam? Does anybody know what happened in Amsterdam? Okay, what happened?
A group of Israeli tourists were there for a football game, and they attacked, actually they attacked the Germans, they put on Palestinian flags, et cetera. And then, most of them, they are working, maybe it was German, Italian.
Yes.
And the way the Palestinian army was at the Israeli tour.
Yes, and they called it a pogrom.
It was kind of just like crystal knocks.
Right, it was like crystal knocks. Okay, so this is a prime example, it's a really like crystallized version of what has been happening in the media forever, when it comes to Palestine, right? It started in October 7th, no it did not. It started in 1948 with the Nakba, right? So really, truly, think about uplifting those voices that do not get to be in those spaces. So Thanksgiving dinner's coming, y'all. Okay, it's gonna be uncomfortable, Aunt Mary's gonna say some stuff, alright? And you're not gonna let her get away with it, because that type of rhetoric dehumanizes people and allows genocide to happen, okay? So the best way to do that is to uplift those voices, send those stories from these Palestinian journalists, there's a little one who's only like nine years old, right? And she's, she's literally documenting and filming her extermination for y'all. So we have a duty to listen to it, and we have a duty to watch it. And it is hard. I've been watching children being blown to shreds for over a year, and it destroys me every single time. But there's a nine-year-old filming her, who am I to say I'm not gonna watch, right? And I'm not watching to feel sorry for them. I'm watching to be enraged enough to get out there every single day, despite threats to my life, despite threats to my career, all of that kind of stuff, because that's nothing compared to what's happening there, right? And they don't have to look like you to matter to you. And we've seen in collective liberation from the beginning, people like James Baldwin, people like Malcolm X, Anthony Bourdain, have been talking about Palestine forever, right? All of our liberation is intertwined. So if you're a queer person, guess what? There are queer people in Palestine being killed. If you care about reproductive justice, it's also something that matters in Palestine. If you care about any of those issues, it is an intersectional struggle, right? So uplift those voices. We are lucky that we live in an age where Professor Google, she's like brilliant, she's available 24/7, she's very generous with her time, right? So you can go on Professor Google, you can go on Instagram, you can go on TikTok, and you have what we call own voices, stories. There's a lot of novels that have been written, documentaries that have been made, all kinds of picture books even, right? By and about Palestinians, so you can learn about who they are, and not only does that make you angry, but it also humanizes Palestinian people, right? It turns them into humans, because the first way to dehumanize a people is to not let them tell their stories, okay? So uplift those voices, share them, and understand that you're doing genuine work when you're doing that. It's not your voice, it's their voice. Makes sense? Alright, we also need to amplify local leadership, and there are some folks here today that are doing this work, Our Students for Justice for Palestine, Elise and Hannah, phenomenal leaders, Hannah's the granddaughter of a Nakba survivor, they're Palestinian Americans, and they're doing this work day in and day out, while trying to get a degree, okay? It's a lot. So find out who they are, a lot of them are here today, meet them, get to know them, follow their Instagrams, figure out what it is that they're doing, and then ask, "How can I support you?" And then do that, right? Sometimes it's as simple as, "Can I bring you soup?" Right? "Can I just bring you some soup? How are you taking care of yourself today? What can I take off your plate?" Right? Without a photo op, without a note of thanks required, I don't know what it is about Americans with thank you notes, but you're all obsessed with them. Very strange. And then you gotta keep thank you note, like you're supposed to keep that and go to the special plate, I don't know, then I do our write-off, thank you note, but the thank you note, I'm very confused. Okay, so engage with those local voices, find out what the needs and aspirations of the community are, and really think about, again, those grounded, lived experiences. So there's a lot going on with local leadership here. We've got protests on 72nd and Dodge every single Wednesday, you've probably seen us, right? I go as often as I can. We've got study series, we've got films that we've been showing, we've got potlucks that we've been doing, we've had fundraisers that we're doing. There's so much that you can do, and you don't have to do all of it, right? Even just a little bit, is it just coming here today? Yes, right? Educating yourself, and then asking, "How can I support you?" So find out who the local leaders are, and then support them. There are also community-led initiatives that are happening, so either directly with their needs, or understanding that, okay, Palestinian folks have always been the most resilient, the most powerful, the most strong, the most educated people in the world, their literacy rate is off the charts. Anybody go to this scholasticide session earlier? So you know, right? Education is incredibly important to Palestinians. Despite everything they're going through, they're still going to university online, like trying to do what they can to be educated. So what is it that you can think of that will align with what their needs are? Do they need water? Do they need people to amplify their voices? Do they need somebody to literally stand in the way of somebody who's gonna attack them, because they won't attack somebody who looks like white, right? But they are gonna attack somebody who looks like me, okay? So think about what the needs are, and support those community-led initiatives, whether it's a protest, whether it's a teach-in, there are folks here providing childcare today, that's huge too, right? You like kids? Help. I also like kids. So it's important also to think about intersectionality. Has anybody heard this term before? Okay, quite a few of you. Those of you who have not, intersectionality was coined by a black feminist scholar, Dr. Kimberly Crenshaw, in 1989. How many of you were born after 1999, or even not? Okay, that makes me feel old, that's great. Yes, so a long time. So intersectionality basically means that those of us who have multiple marginalized identities cannot separate those identities from each other when we're experiencing discrimination. It's like saying, okay, you know, I got attacked on the corner of 72nd and Dodge, and somebody asks you, "Well, were you on 72nd Street or were you on Dodge Street?" Or both, okay? Like, that's what intersectionality is. Kimberly Crenshaw said, "When I experienced discrimination, I experienced it as a, not just as a woman, and not just as a black person, but as a black woman." You can't separate those things, right? It's like a bucket of fish hooks, I've never been fishing, but I heard this is a thing. You pull the fish hook out, and all the other ones come up, right? So we have to think about that, we have to understand how those overlapping impressions manifest themselves in the Palestinian struggle, so that we create connections across different types of struggle, different types of justice. So like I said earlier, reproductive justice is your thing? Reproductive justice is happening there, right? And it's not just women who have a uterus, there are also trans men who have a uterus, right? So we really have to think intersectionally about that. People are going to experience discrimination in different ways based on where we intersect with those identities. So when it comes to faith, when it comes to class, when it comes to race, ethnicity, religion, gender identity and expression, all of those different things are connected, and we have to think about that. We can't just think, "Oh, it's just Palestinian Muslims." No, they're Palestinian Christians who are being exterminated, right? We can't think that it's a religious thing only. Scholasticide is happening, ecocide is happening, right? If you care about the environment, what do you think 2,000-pound bombs are doing to the environment, right? So we have to be intersectional in our justice, we can't just say, "Why, only care about this issue within these man-made fake borders? Everybody outside of those, not really human to me," right? So again, embrace that intersectionality. So the Palestinians' struggle intersects with all types of oppression, race, gender, class, LGBTQ rights. I had somebody tell me, because I'm queer, and they're like, "Okay, but like if you went to Palestine, they'd kill you for being queer." That's like chickens voting for KFC. And I was like, "There's so many types of wrongs in that whole situation." Who is killing queer Palestinians right now?
Israelis.
Israel's funded by the US, right? So miss me with that stuff. It's called pink washing, by the way, right? So all of these different things, acknowledging that really helps bring more people into the movement. So when you are trying to bring other folks to help you advocate for Palestine, talk about these things. Oh, you say that you are pro-life. What's more anti-life than a genocide? Just say it, right? Oh, you say you care about the environment. Do you know what's being pulled into the sea right now? Do you know what's happening there? Oh, you claim you care about people being hungry. Understand the malnutrition and famine that's happening in Gaza right now, right? Oh, you say you claim, you claim to care about kids. Forty-four percent of the people killed in Gaza have been children. The highest demographic is ages five to nine. Five to nine, deliberately being shot and targeted by drones and snipers. So if you care about children, those are children too, right? So when you do that, you are including all the marginalized groups within the Palestinian context, but also beyond, because you're bringing people together, right? Solidarity with other movements. There has been a long history of pro-Palestinian movement being linked to other solidarity, other pro-justice initiatives, anti-racism initiatives, indigenous rights. We have a long history of pro-Palestine and indigenous rights here in this country being linked forever. Anti-colonialism, the whole thing is about colonialism, right? It's about land grab. Both the United States and Israel are built on a lie that land belongs to people. Indigenous people know that land doesn't belong to anybody, we are here to take care of it, right? That has been linked forever. And so when we do that, when we link those rights together, those justice movements together, what we do is we have a collective that is stronger and more diverse. My grandmother used to say, "You can easily break one finger." You can easily break three fingers. Put them together in a fist? Not possible, right? So when you link anti-racism, when you link indigenous rights, anti-colonialism, disability rights, reproductive justice, environmental, all of that, you link them all together, now it's not so easy to beat us, right? There's a collective voice. It's louder, it's stronger. Okay, so then there's also this issue of racism and misrepresentation, right? So we have to address that. We have to address it carefully. Again, those of you who identify as white with a hard H, like the tall white man, you are more able to do this than a lot of us, right? We get tone-policed. Let me say that again, we get tone-policed. We're too emotional. Well, you only care about them because they share your religion, or you only care about them because they look like your father, or they look like your children. But when it's coming from y'all, I can't say that to you, right? So also address the anti-Muslim stuff that's out there. The most recent one that I've seen is women in burqa, and they're like, "Ooh, Trump's gonna make it like that, because Muslims are so anti-women." That's misrepresentation of Islam, that's not really what that's about. Hijab, burqa, and all of that is a choice, it's a religious choice, it's a feminist choice in a lot of cases, right? So that misrepresentation of Arab and Muslim people, make it go away. Do your research, don't just post things, knee-jerk reaction, "Oh my gosh, you know, Muslims are..." All of us have been swimming in this society of Islamophobia since the beginning, you can't help but get wet, right? 9/11 changed a lot for a lot of people. And so, "Oh, do you want Sharia law to come here?" Do you even know what Sharia law is? It says to follow the law of the land, wherever you are. So it's constitutional to the Americans, to the United States, right? So when people say that anti-Arab, anti-Muslim, anti-brown, anti-black stuff, you have to nip it in the bud. Some ways to do that? Are you sure you meant to say that out loud? I'm sorry, I don't understand why that was funny, can you explain the joke to me? I didn't get it. Well, could you please repeat that? Right? Just little things that you can say at the Thanksgiving table.
Heidi, it's important to remember that like saying it initially, the reaction you get may not be exactly likely, won't be what you want, right? Like, they're gonna, the defensiveness will come up, the projection will come up, all these different things, but that can happen over time, as they sort of plant a seed, like the watermelon seed, and you are able to kind of get them thinking. They may never admit that to you, but over time, the more they hear people pushing back, the more they're gonna think twice before they make a big comment, and maybe, just maybe, eventually, they will start to have a shift in mindset.
Yes. And they know for sure, you are not a person that they're gonna be able to say that around, right? Hopefully, they will be a person people can say that around. So confronting anti-Arab racism, pervasive, right? It seeps into activist spaces. I know myself as a Muslim, in queer space, as a queer Muslim, the amount of Islamophobia I have faced is beyond, right? A fellow queer person who's white and Jewish sent me an article telling me who to vote for. A colleague. Did she email anybody else? Was that appropriate? Was that professional? Was that ethical? I'm the only Muslim in my department, open Muslim, right? A week ago. Constant, right? So even places that are supposed to be activist spaces, that are supposed to be safe, this still comes out, still comes out. I remember when the Pulse shooting happened. There was so much Islamophobia online, and people were like, "Are you coming to the vigil? I'm like, "I don't feel safe at that vigil. I do not. People know I'm Muslim, they think a Muslim did this. I'm not safe at that vigil, even though I'm mourning alongside all these other queer people, right?" So you have to acknowledge that it happens there. Just because somebody is an ally for one thing, doesn't mean they're gonna understand allyship for everything else. Doesn't mean they're gonna be intersectional. So it's our job to teach them, right? So acknowledge and confront your own biases first. What is the first thing you think when you see somebody in hijab? What's the first thing you see when you meet a Muslim? What's the first thing you think? What's your first thought? Your first thought is your bias. That's not something you can always control, but what you do with that first thought, you can control, right? So first thing, acknowledge your own biases. And then educate others as well, alright? Especially within your family and friend groups. How many of you have all your closest friends look like you? Right? There are a lot of people, all of their friends look like them, go to their same church, go to their same faith, wherever they go, live in the same socioeconomic status they have, right? And so they have an echo chamber, and they don't think outside that. So those biases just grow, right? So we have to do that to foster that genuine respect for one another, allyship for one another, and make it be a more inclusive environment for Palestinian voices. Because there are places, here on this campus, Palestinian Americans do not feel safe, right? Just like I talked about the Pulse nightclub shooting. So it is your responsibility to educate yourself about Palestinian culture, Palestinian history, what Palestinians are telling us that they need and is happening to them. And like I said, Professor Google, YouTube, Instagram, TikTok, Facebook, it's out there. I had somebody brag to me yesterday. This was behind her on Instagram. She was like, "I don't know the results of the election. Don't tell me." Yesterday! And I was like, "For what?" Right? And she's like, "But you're on Instagram." She's like, "I have made sure my algorithm is just funny memes and..." Well, she knows it's bad news, I think, so she's... But like, that should not be your algorithm, my friends, okay? If you're an activist and you're an ally, that should not be your algorithm.
Was she claiming to be one, Ariel? Was she saying she's an activist? Not mysterious, like you guys?
She claimed to be an ally in the past, yes. So rather than placing the burden on the people who are the most oppressed in this movement, to educate you, you can educate yourself, just like coming here. So you already done step one. Well done. Yes, but self-education really takes the pressure off the folks who are doing the on-the-ground, day-to-day, not only work, but are grieving. A lot of us are grieving. When I'm watching children being murdered who look like my children, that's grief, right? My colleague here on campus, Dr. Isaac Kim, has coined a term called vicarious cultural trauma. And vicarious cultural trauma hits you most when it is people who are like you. It's like if you are somebody who's disabled and you hear ableism happening to somebody else, it still, this flashback happens, right? And so Palestinian Americans, Arab Americans, Muslim Americans are feeling that grief, and they're still trying to get up and do something about it. So the last thing they need is for folks to tell them, "Well, tell me about the Palestinian struggle. What is the Nafa?" You could Google it, right? You can read books. Palestinians have written phenomenal books, and I'll give you some names later, but that really, really needs to be your burden. You have to educate yourself. It doesn't have to take a lot of time or a lot of energy. A TikTok is very short, right? A little video here and there while you're brushing your teeth, you know, you can hear something. You can put a podcast on. Lots of ways to do that. Okay, so allyship is about action and accountability. Allyship, I've heard a lot of people say ally is not a noun, it's a verb. Okay, we're all familiar with talks of speech. I was an English teacher, so I just wanted to make sure. You don't get to call yourself an ally. Whoever you're trying to be an allyship with will decide that for you, okay? But it means constant action and constant accountability. If you get called in, don't get defensive, right? Here's where we prioritize impact over intent. I didn't mean it that way, right? What happened, though, was harm. So if I'm walking past the foot, okay, and I step on Susan's foot, and I haven't been skinny since I was a fetus, so now I've crushed her foot. Okay, she's gonna be multiple surgeries, the pins that they put in there, it's gonna be very painful. She's not gonna be able to walk for a bit. She's gonna wear one of those boots, okay? Showering, they're gonna be different from now on. So I've walked and I've stepped on her foot, and she says, "Ouch." I can make it about my intent, and I can say, "Susan, I didn't mean it. I didn't wake up this morning and think, 'I'm gonna step on people's feet.'" And anyway, I stepped on Ariel's foot last week, and she said it was fine. Crawl it off, right? That's me being focused on myself, centering myself and my feelings, even though I was not hurt in that exchange at all. Focusing on the impact is, "Susan, I'm so sorry. I promise I'm gonna watch where I walk from now on. Please let me take you to the hospital. I will bring you food. I'll bake you bread. I'll make sure my shirt stays for it. I will sell my plasma. Okay, we'll get you care." That is focusing on the intent. Does she need to know it was not intentional? Yes, but not now. Now is not the time. Now is the time to take care of the harm. So when people call you in, oh, it can get hard. Because I'm a good person. I'm a good person. I'm doing active work. I educated Muslims. I did all these things. Yes, but you also hurt somebody, right? So take accountability. Do some sitting with that yucky feeling, which is, doesn't feel good, right? Then do better next time and teach others to do better as well. What is your mistake could be somebody else's mistake that you could prevent by telling them, "Hey, I did this gross thing, and I was called in. Y'all should also not do this gross thing." Yes? So we have to focus on meaningful contributions. We have to focus on more than performative allyship. I do not trust the blue bracelets. The safety pin folks came for me. They claimed they were safe, and they were not safe. The blue bracelet is the same thing, right? I don't need a blue bracelet to show me that somebody's safe, because they should have already shown me by now that they are a safe person through their actions, through their allyship, through showing up, through asking me if I'm okay during this genocide, right? So performative allyship, not cool. Photo opportunities, not cool. Posting a photo of yourself at a protest at the, you know, on Facebook or on Instagram, it's not helping anybody, right? Unless it's going to spread inspiration for others to join you, then cool. But if you went to a protest one time with a photo selfie of yourself with a flag, no, okay? So you have to be accountable, and you have to commit to action. Allyship is a lot like friendship. How many of you have a friend? Well, thank goodness, okay, everybody has a friend. I'm sure that you did not call that person your friend the first time they did an active friendship for you, like for good, right? They have to continue to do friendship action, right? I met Flora and Rin right now. Like, y'all have done things for each other for a minute, right? There you go. That's what allyship should be. You commit yourself to action, even when it's hard, even when you're tired, okay? Even when you're grumpy. We all get grumpy. So make sure that you are fed, moisturized, hydrated, you're pooping every day, so that you can be a good ally. Take care of yourself. You can take care of others. Pooping is very important. Eat your fiber. Thank you. So I'm gonna leave you with some quotes here from Palestinians and from people who have been in the pro-Palestinian movement. Gabor Maté is somebody you should follow. There are lots of videos by him. He is the son of Holocaust survivors. He's Jewish. He says, "The murder of my grandparents in Auschwitz does not justify the ongoing dispossession of Palestinians. Israel's right to defend itself, unarguable in principle, does not validate mass killing." That's just one quote from this dude. Okay, he's got books. He's got whole ass YouTube videos, all right? We've got Edward Said, amazing. Founded the Palestinian Studies Program at Columbia University, where the encampments were happening in Columbia, where those students were being targeted by police. His office overlooked that, okay? His son also, you should follow him. He speaks a lot as well. "The struggle of Palestine is not just a political struggle, it is a struggle for our humanity." That really resonated with me, right? Because if you can look away when somebody else's children are being burned alive, connected to IVs in a hospital tent because the hospital's gone, where's your humanity, right? So that really resonated. Susan Abouhawa, she's a novelist, she's Palestinian American, she's phenomenal. She says, "We come from the land, give our love and labor to her, and she nurtures us in return. When we die, we return to the land, in a way she owns us. Palestine owns us, and we belong to her." She's another person you can follow. Buy her books, read her articles. She's phenomenal. There's Bisan, our beloved Bisan who I talked about. She is a journalist who lives in North, she's in northern Hezha right now, right? Y'all know what's going on in North Hezha. The worst of it. Literal Holocaust is happening there. People being burned alive, starved, exterminated. And she reports on that. And she interviews little children, you know, "What are you doing today?" She tells stories about Palestinian history. She says, "God is my witness that I am full of life, that I love my life, I love my country, I love my family and my friends. I've always had a dream to help people, change the world, and stand up for the truth, and my voice is always loud." And it is. You watch her, and she says, "Hello, I'm Bisan and I'm still alive," right?
Could you say her name again?
Bisan, B-I-S-A-N.
What's her last name?
Oda. Yep, Oda. Wizard Bisan on Instagram. We have Paleski, as well. By the way, both Bisan and Paleski follow me on Facebook and friended me and sent me messages, and I was like, "Oh shit." I gotta really keep her real. So she says, she's another journalist, and she says, "I want the world to see us as humans." Motaz is another journalist. He ended up having to leave Palestine, but he went back. And he said, "I don't feel like I'm gonna make it to the end, so please forgive me." Can you imagine people asking for forgiveness because they may not live long enough to document it all for us? Audrey Lord says, "I am not free while any woman is unfree, even when her shackles are very different from my own." Audrey Lord's not Palestinian. She's an American woman. That's what it means to be human, right? So yes, we have our differences. Yes, people are of different races and colors and ethnicities and all of that. Palestinian folks come in all colors, right? Different shades of brown and black. Some have blue eyes and blonde hair. They're all human beings. So some reminders. We are all on a different part of the journey. So give yourself grace and give grace to others. Allow yourself to mess up, but then be accountable when you do, right? And call in those who also mess up around you. Unconscious harm, subconscious harm, unintentional harm is still harm. It's still harm. Didn't mean to step on her foot, but I did, right? Impact is more important than intent, especially in that moment of harm. You may be feeling terrible. You may feel like you're about to break down and cry, but you caused harm, so you have to take accountability for that. And the best apology is changed behavior. You can apologize to me. I won't believe you until I see that you've changed your behavior and you don't do that again. Leave your ego behind. This is so hard, though. We all have an ego, okay? Even, I'm just like, mm, my ego comes up, it's like, hello, I'm a goat. Leave your ego behind. Pushback is feedback. Pushback is feedback. Accept it gratefully. Say thank you, right? Keep learning. People know me for a kindness movement, and they're like, "It's not, what you're doing is not kind. You're just, it's not nice. Why do you keep talking about this stuff?" Well, we have different definitions of kindness. And to me, kindness is making bigots uncomfortable. It is not impious to make bigots uncomfortable. I'm sorry, how is that funny? You said what out loud? Depending on how spicy you're feeling in the moment and who you're talking to. Don't put yourself in danger. Like, we don't need to be harmed, but when it is safe to do so, you gotta do something, right? When you hear something happening or you see something happening, you can do one of three things or all three things or a combination. If it is not safe, you can help the person cope with what happened. How many of you have ever had something happen to you and nobody said anything? And then you are like, "Did that really happen?" And you start like questioning your sanity and your reality. That's called gaslighting, right? But if one person had said, "Sky, I saw what happened, and it was not okay," that that would have helped you, right? That's what it means to help somebody cope with it, to be a witness, right? We know a lot of survivors of the Holocaust in World War II said, "Witness." So that it doesn't happen again, so that we don't forget. So sometimes just being a witness is powerful. This is happening, right? You can repost on social media and just be a witness and say, "This is happening. I see it." No matter what the media does and misrepresents or whatever, I am showing the truth, right? So you can help people cope with it. You can challenge what happened, or you can respond to what happened. And hopefully, all three. But always keep safe first, because remember, you can't help anybody if you're not hydrated, not moisturized, and you haven't pooped in three days. And finally, that saying that I gave you earlier, "Nothing about us, without us, is for us." Nothing about Palestinian Americans and Palestinians and Muslim Americans and Muslims and Arab Americans and Arabs is about us unless you saw our input and our consent first, right? The same thing with any other marginalized group. How many of you have siblings? You know this, right? You know this. You're not helping your sibling if you decide for them what they want. They're gonna be like, "I didn't ask for that." Right? The same thing here. So these two siblings are, I don't know what's happening over there, but... So, any questions? So far. Concrete support versus performative? Concrete support means taking meaningful actions, right? So you can do things like donate. Lots of places are taking donations. Lots of families in Hezha are taking donations. If you follow those journalists, if you follow creators, influencers here in Omaha, Nebraska's for Palestine has a TikTok run by Maida. They also have an Instagram run by Elise. Sorry? Farah, sorry. Elise runs the Students for Justice for Palestine one. Yes, Farah runs the NFP one. They will constantly give you updates on what needs to be happening. So donations, volunteering, advocating for rights, social media, in person.